You should call a story first. Very good. Call the meeting of the emergency services facility building committee to order the time is six thirty seven. Members present Marco, Toulis, Roth, Snyder, McFulham, and Goski, Potencius, Jantik, and Stuart Cobb for Tyler Mullins. So moved.
And is there anyone online? Why are we not seeing?
I don't think we had anyone because it would be prompting us. Yeah, there's just.
Just us.
No one online. Very good. We have the minutes of the sixteenth. We don't. Okay, well, table that one. Minutes are what we work on. Are those the sixteen? Oh, they are. So you printed those out? All right. Anybody else?
Probably not. If Peter's got them, I know I can.
All right.
You said something there, Ralph. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry.
They have something to me.
I could do it. It doesn't mean I.
Well, let's table that for now. President to speak. I know that Alex wants to get some things and he has another meeting to go to. So let's jump right into president's speaking in the interest of time.
All right. Thank you. So this is the only board I haven't been able to report to yet regarding the OSHA complaint goes filing as well in one. There was an OSHA complaint filed and don't know who filed it. It was an anonymous complaint regarding the some of the living conditions with inside that building. The major concerns were exhaust and ventilation. The fact that the heat draws is a hot or a forced air hot air system. It draws from the bay to get the air for the furnace, which means pulling whatever out of the bays into the furnace into the rest of the building. The original complaint had that there was no exhaust over the stove. That they threw out because it's considered residential, does not need an exhaust system. The other big one that they had was no decontamination area within the firehouse for EMS supplies or EMS equipment. Primarily that if they had to wash something in a safe, they got to do it in the kitchen. Which that did not go over very well with OSHA. We have to find a way to modify that. So there are some modifications that we have to make regarding exhaust systems, fresh air intake. We are working through what that cost is going to be. We're we don't have the we know what the file is going to say, but we don't have a final report. We won't have that. They said five to six weeks. With that, we know that there will be a couple of fines regarding excuse me, some ocean logs and reporting. And then the exposure control plan. Just not just being how it be. Not having anything to do with that building. We need specific for that building, which none of us really even thought of. When we thought temporary, we didn't think of having to change policies and procedures and stuff like that.
Actually, I'm writing, but I'll just.
So that's where we're at with that. So we will be on the board of finance with some stuff for this month.
Okay. All right.
Why would you be going to the board of finance? Because there are things like the exhaust systems and stuff like that, that we've got to find a way to pay for. The building's not even occupied. The south station, it has nothing to do with the main stations, all to do with the little station.
Notice the south, south of Wellington.
South Wellington Station has nothing to do with the main station. It's for the living conditions that they have right now.
From the anonymous complaint.
So because you guys are dealing with buildings, I wanted you guys so at least be aware of it.
Yeah, right.
And you being a fire corporation, the complaints filed against you, correct, in the town. Why the first? Because I don't know how it works. First selectman's name is the first one on the complaint. That makes those sounds your private corporation. We work for the town of Wellington regardless. Be the same thing in Wellington Hill. Have a complaint filed against them. It's coming to the town as well.
I would expect in the end that that's actually probably a technical error.
I agree.
But they're going to cast a wide net anyway.
Correct. So where they a lot of fire departments are town agencies.
Correct.
So where we. And this is what we asked and Ron and I met with them. That was one of the questions we asked is why is the first selectman on there? It's because our workers' comp are in everything else. It's through the town of Wellington. So regardless of how you look at it, whether they're private employees of Wellington Fire Department number one, their workers' comp is through the town of Wellington. It is paid by the town of Wellington regardless. They are considered in some form or fashion, a town employee.
Well, given the fact that our station is in front subsidized through the town.
Through the town.
Yeah, it it makes sense.
Andy, I strongly recommend our county attorney review this to make sure that we're not assuming any additional liability that we should not.
We also should remember, as concerned as we are about it, it's not in the purview of this committee. We're a building committee. So the fact that there are OSHA violations, that matters to us because we might we might want, right. But as far as like legal strategy, we've got to hope that the board of selectmen or maybe the fire services efficiency committee or whatever can take it up.
Absolutely. Yeah. I did know that the workers' comp is paid by the town. And I guess one could argue that the town directs the employees' work, which would be the the hook from workers' comp is who is actually directing the and telling the workers what to do. So I guess that makes sense in that regard, but.
The workers' comp policy, so fights and volunteers, I think.
Yeah, right. That's right. Which I guess that does make sense. Peter bring up a good point, but like Mike said, it's not really our. No, no, I but that's.
I understand.
I wear different hats.
Sorry, well, you put your selectman hat back. I strongly I strongly advise that we.
I hadn't I don't I hadn't heard.
Do our due diligence.
Selectmen speak to the legality of it. I don't know if they thought that. Regardless. We have town employees that are at health risk because of building issues. Those building issues do need to be amended. So yeah.
Or changed. So regardless, I think we're trying to work on that.
Yeah, that's a good point. That I will I wasn't trying to discourage that part.
No, no, I understand that. It's just regardless of where we think the liability lies, the fact is if we have workers that are compromised.
The timing is good, which maybe the report, the person who anonymously reported not only was concerned about worker welfare, but also the timing. It was strategically good because here we are studying the buildings.
Here we are studying buildings. Yeah.
And the fact of the matter is, we just recommended that station thirteen get shut down and they all move up there. So we've put more people in a residential setting in a middle day than it's compromised.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah, yes. And I certainly wouldn't have thought of any of those things. So makes sense.
Anything else? All right. What do we do about the minutes? Some people have them, some don't. I didn't read them. The sixteenth.
I didn't either. I didn't come prepared to address that. I'm sorry.
In the in the spirit of speaking about it, we'll table that until next time. The minutes are slowly being comprised. There was a lot of that weight was on my shoulders. I didn't do a good job managing that that whole secretary or recording secretary issue. Shannon has informed me that she won't be doing it any longer. Eileen Smith will be. I spoke with her. But she can't make she couldn't make this one because the notice was too short. She had a prior commitment. So going forward in 2025, she will be present here. And she will take the minutes and in a more time, you know, accurately and post them in a timely manner. So we shouldn't have this this problem.
I did talk to Lisa, the recording secretary for the board of finance. And she is available if you need to.
Okay, I mean, called me last night and said she she's she's fine with it. But not tonight because she just heard about it on Monday. So and speaking to I went to the FOIA meeting, the thing, the little talk they had at the library. And minutes don't have to be very detailed. In fact, the person specifically said less is more. I guess the legal requirement, sorry, you got to have when the meeting was called or it was present. And if there were any motions made, who voted on them and how? So by name, you know, call it out by role. If it's unanimous, then it goes by the rule. But if there was any any differences in the vote, then you would have to name that. And then when you I think that when you adjourned, that's it's pretty much it. You don't have to have a play by play what everybody said. Particularly since things are recorded. So that takes a little bit of pressure off the recording secretary. But it makes sure that please help me if I stray from those basic FOIA rules. Get me back on track. We don't we don't want to have procedural errors impede our progress. And those can most most courts are very willing to sign with the staff or the the members of a committee. But if you don't follow procedures, you will usually lose. Doesn't help your case because those things should be solid.
Yeah, basically, any motion, any decision.
Any decision.
Even if it's by consensus.
Right.
Shouldn't be reported.
That's right. So that's all right. So we will move on now to old business.
I don't think there's much on the first page.
Not really.
Well. The. I had item D. Summarizing other than buildings anymore than getting these private departments. That's one thing we should be working on. And then item G. I still haven't seen anything on that. And I was hoping that the technical departments could get us that information.
You should have done all yours. I looked through my emails and I didn't find it at least. But if you said it and I have it. If you could reset it. I mean, I'm sure the consultant is going to be asking for all that again. So.
But I was just under old business through the whole or station thirteen winter house. That's been done.
Oh, good.
They get the water off. They actually put antifreeze through the system so that anything left over, so they told them to antifreeze.
All right. And the state communication unit, the colder the building, the better.
Don't have to worry about all that stuff. And cold is on the menu.
Actually, with systems like that, don't you have to worry about overheating?
You.
Yeah, it's got a very noisy fan in it.
All right. So anybody have anything to talk about with old business that we feel we should address it more detail? It's kind of we're just those are all placeholders, things that we eventually will have to do. We're often waiting for something else to happen before we're going to get into that. So everyone's okay with that. We'll move on to new business as noted under all, but we should be summarizing other more median needs aside from the building. One thought that I had was. What did I so the last one, oh, the version of an updated that one?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, yeah.
I minimized the charge. And we were I felt we stood on every item in that charge. It's my perspective, but I we hope that anyone on this committee, if you've got anything to add, anything that you think I screwed up on. You should have.
All right.
So what I was trying to do was come up with a document and update that. Yeah, we can update this regularly. Or post it on our webpage so that people have the ability to see where we're at.
Right. So there is certainly more. The so the real the truly emergent need, of course, was what's been going on with station thirteen, which is by far not resolved, of course. It's 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 untemporarily. It's it's on a stay of execution. But the the OSHA report is a perfect example of the fact that we do have two other buildings at a minimum to be considering. So we have now some new emergent needs with the other South Wellington Station. And we have not spent because it's not as emergent, we haven't spent time really talking about the Old Farms Road Station either. And what are the what are the lackings there? Because it's not quite as emergent.
Well, that's true.
Right. But we a lot of the same things that came up in that OSHA report would probably come up if that happened at the Wellington Hill Fire Station. Not all of them, because like we don't have people living.
Right.
But I'm listening to the list. I'm thinking, yes, yes, yes.
Really?
Yeah. So.
Okay, well, that's important.
So we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that we really have three buildings to be thinking about.
You're absolutely right.
You know, we've dealt with the really big emergency temporarily, but that's going to come back around. And we still have to consider these other buildings. This OSHA information, what you know, what needs to be done at Wellington Hill. And so I don't think it's tonight's thing. But I think if we need to keep it on our radar. And I think the location studies can allow us to talk about a lot of that.
That really is sort of the meat of this whole committee is to manage these three buildings. They're exactly that. They are aging in front of us. Yeah. What do we do about that? And what is the best course of action?
Somebody know it.
Thank you. Sure. Yeah. So on that status point, I just think we need to remember that we're talking about a minimum of three facilities that we should be keeping in our thought process here.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And yes, I think that that's probably where we need to really start to focus on. And I personally, I've been waiting for this study because that's going to be kind of the guiding light for me because I really don't know what the best course of action is. And I'm relying on experts that do this to sort of I've looked at some of the older ones where it said, you know, put a station up on dirt bike road and do different things. So twenty twenty five we'll have new information, new data, new ideas, hopefully, or whatever. They will have ideas that then we can launch from. I was speaking to Ralph just kind of essentially that I'm reminded of the old adage that the lawyers, they don't ask questions unless you already know the answer. Would seem that you I don't, but you must have an idea based on your experience. What is the best? And I'm not saying tonight we have to you don't have to answer now, but what is the best? If you had an unlimited amount of money, what would you as the as the emergency service personnel want to see? And again, don't answer it now because it's a fairly broad subject with a lot of conversation, but really, if there was an unlimited amount of money. I mean, for me, if it was an unlimited amount of money, I'd say take center school and turn that into a center town hub with a new fire station and emergency services center and have that be and then have two satellite stations with the right equipment to service the town. That's if you had a gazillion dollars, that's what I imagine because it's sexually located. People are used to it. It makes sense opposed to the other town structures, but I don't know if that's real or if that makes sense or not.
So I think you helped. I think you helped shine the light on the process because every single one of us is going to have some ideas like that.
Exactly.
Right. And they're and they're all those ideas are going to be fed by different experiences. Like you made a good comment about people are familiar with this being sort of a hub area of town, right? So that's something that the consultant won't know. That's the part we all contribute to the conversation. What I'm hoping out of this whole thing is that we're going to learn something from the consultant.
Yes, that's what I.
That they're gonna they're gonna shine light and and each of us who has our preconceived notions will contribute to that, but we'll get something from it, too.
That's great.
You know, kind of like we all went into looking at the proposal.
Yeah.
For the for the consultant with different experience. And luckily, we all came out unanimous on getting one. But we each looked at that probably from slightly different views.
On that note, if I could just launch off of that, when it comes time to, so far, all I've been doing with the consultants is until it's voted on, I haven't not been saying anyone won yet because I'm not guaranteed that that's going to happen. So I know the last one, I just said, no, we're still deliberating. I haven't made a final decision yet, but we should know by the end of next week.
Because so Fitch knows that they're potentially.
Yes, I did. I did let them know and said that that you came out on top, but it hasn't been fully ready yet. And aside, there it's own. But I haven't told the other ones that they're not there because again, we could be starting all over again. Don't want to make promises, but I can't keep. However, but as you just said, Mike, and I think it's crucial that we when we have our initial meeting with Fitch, I very much want them to know that we want input early on in their decision making. As you just said, to tell them this is, you know, we want to load them up with information that will not be derived from just looking at documents and call ons and, you know, there is a cultures, there are cultures. Town cultures and department cultures that I think they need to have in order to make an informed decision. I want them to have that.
They should have the most upfront information. And then they've got to add their contributions to that because as was commented, Tyler has been very strong about saying something I agree with. As many consultants will come on board and essentially say, what are you looking to get out of this? So we can help you justify what you want. And I think we're all in agreement that we don't want that. We don't want someone to rubber stamp our ideas. We want someone to take our information, give it value, but then to put their professional opinion into the analysis and the results.
Light on things. I really agree with that. I have a different vantage point than perhaps you, Andy. I know we don't have an unlimited budget.
I know that too. And I think it'll be really helpful for me, Elise, to see someone come from the outside, looking at this totally objectively. What is our geography? How much equipment do we have that has to be housed? And where does the equipment need to go? And do these three buildings work or don't work? Maybe we we have this anonymous invasion by OSHA right now. Maybe we won't need that building. Maybe the consultant will say we can close that building or sell it.
One of them did already.
So let's see what an objective observer says to us. You know, we might be very surprised. We might be completely wrong in all of our preconceptions of this because we live here. So as we do that, and as we and since we will, I we will ask the consultant to make, you know, to say we did want to be engaged early. I think we should try as much as we can to keep our emotions out of it and just give the facts than not say, well, what I like I wouldn't say, well, what I'd like to see, because I don't want them to be tainted by that. Just say, here are all the facts that we see them. And then I don't come out and have any facts. You professionals have my facts. And if we keep it to that and then let them calculate that data and then spit out something, which then we can say, wow, that can't happen or that'll never happen.
Every individual in this committee has facts in their head.
Facts.
But they're still swayed by personal.
Sure.
And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that.
No, there isn't.
But well, a good consultant is going to tap into that because they want as much information upfront and they're going to understand the difference between like cultural or bias or whatever.
Right. So anyway, but I think part of it is that we well, since we all have our our vision of what it could be. I think that's good. Hold on to those. And then let's, you know, we're gonna but without trying to feed a consultant, we'll just.
No, we don't want the consultant to regurgitate a want list.
No, no.
Right.
That's great. I'm so glad that that is the feeling with this committee, that we'll get a lot out of it then.
So, yeah.
Well, but anyway, other more meeting aside from the buildings, and we do have three buildings to consider all very valid points. Moving on to B. The board of finance recommended that there was going to be the town meetings on the seventeenth at seven P M. Well, not a this is more of a personal thing, but put it as a also a board of select as a member of the board of selectmen. I would like to give a short presentation at the town meeting, kind of what I did for the board of finance to explain what's going on. When I did it for the board of finance or a subfieldism, I didn't know all that. I I think that when I've been to the town meetings and you're voting on things like that, it's just going to be put up in the well, you can see what's on the what's what, you know. What's on the call. It's three things. And it's all in favor. I have people, what the heck is that all about? And so often, if you read any of the Facebook groups and stuff, it's like, well, how come we don't know about this in advance? I think I want to step forward and say, yeah, I think you do deserve to know. And I don't know who's going to be at the meeting. It's probably the same forty people that seem to go and vote on just about everything. But so maybe we can maybe we can make town meetings a little more interactive and a little more social where people I really think town meeting should be sort of messy. There should be people saying, hey, what's this all about? Why is this happening? Does that make sense? You might get feedback from very, you know, people that you hadn't even thought. So if it's all right with everyone and I have permission to do it. It wasn't. It wasn't very polished, but it was accurate and factual. I think it would be worth going through that and explaining to people that don't know what's happening with any of the stations, what's going on.
Yeah, it's entirely possible you're going to get questioned at the town meeting anyway. Can we hear from the committee chairman about this question or whatever? You may as well just do an update. That's very common in the, you know, the budget meeting, the board of finance chair usually says something at the budget meeting, the superintendent usually says something at the budget meeting.
Okay.
Well, I hope we hit that item at the town meeting. Before I think the appropriate time is for Andy to you know, we read the call, we read the question and then we hand it over to you.
Sure.
To explain where we're at.
Right.
And then it'll end up to question.
And any of you that that are going to be at that meeting, any of you that want to answer any of the questions, jump right there. Because I probably wouldn't know a lot of the answers. It might be more technical. I could probably speak clearly accurately the one sound within this committee, but beyond that, I would probably be lost. Or I probably wouldn't want to be the one to speak to. So that's that. Tom, do you call the tab? So anybody that got it would be awesome. Item C, consider preparing agenda for a kickoff meeting with our consulting. So that goes back to I think it should be all of us that are able to attend. I don't know enough about it. It could be Zoom. I don't know if it's in person. We can certainly request whatever we want and see what we get. I think we're the other Arkansas, Kentucky, somewhere in Maryland, somewhere not here.
Do you know where Fitch is looking off the top here? I don't remember.
It's south state. Missouri. Missouri. Yeah, okay. So but hey, maybe maybe they'd be willing to come here. I think that would be best that we could meet in person. But in this day and age, Zoom is a fairly online, I think of it twice.
We're all used to that right now.
Yeah, we're working on especially for a kickoff meeting. Yeah, for a kickoff meeting. But again, we can have it. What tonight's new business is consider preparing agenda. I think that's wise. I'd like you all to consider what do we want? We want it to be smooth. We want it to be to be robust. But we want the content to be enough that makes sense. So we need to have some sort of a plan. That's how we're going to talk. What do we want to say? I don't even know. I really I don't know what to say about this. So.
Yeah, the other thing that Andy and I had discussed is this is going to want a contract.
Oh, yeah.
There's going to be payment terms. There's going to be deliverables. There's going to be information that they need. I would expect those things to be in the contract. I would like at least some representation from this committee reviewing that contract, not from a legal perspective as much as a scope perspective.
In both directions.
Yeah, I'm sure as we as soon as we notify them that it's been approved by the townspeople, they're they're going to start a conversation about the contract right away. And and that'll be, you know, probably should happen with the first selectman's office.
Okay.
Initially to get get their draft or whatever. Because they're going to want to review it for whatever legal and business reasons, and we can review it for the scope all at the same time.
Could we do that on the Could we do that on the same call? Could we, do you think we could?
Well, I think we need to see the document.
I think as soon as it's approved by the town meeting, the next day, you call them and you say, it's been approved by the town meeting.
Okay.
What's the next step? They're gonna say, okay, we're gonna send you a draft contract.
It's, it's better working with these contracts to have them and to read them over.
Yeah, absolutely.
Find tooth comb and then go back and forth.
Okay, so just real quick. Let's say five things, if I call, if, if, if the town meeting gets approved, Fitch is our, our, our choice. I'm going to call them and talk to them. What five things should I be? Right up front, what five?
How soon are they gonna get you the contract?
Do they write the contract, or does Tom write the contract?
They'll usually provide that, they'll provide the contract, and then the town will probably dissect it and say, we don't, we don't agree to how this is written, or whatever. But it'll be basically their contract.
And then their attorney would look at it, I assume, we probably lost that off the attorney?
Yeah, the first selectman will decide, if he thinks it's clear enough, he may not, but he'll probably send it to the town.
The contract would be with the town, and the first selectman would be the one to be the executor of that. It's okay, so I would say next steps, contract. What other things should I have on that very first call?
Yeah, schedule, because, and they'll, their schedule is based on upon signature of the contract. So once this wheeling and dealing is done, and they get the contract back signed, they'll probably have a typical, we can do our kickoff meeting within one week of contract signature, or whatever. They probably have a timeline idea already.
Okay, so as long as I, I just, I just wanna have some five, you know, five things so I don't lose track, and then the conversation will take its own flow. But as long as I hit those, the next steps, contract, schedule, scope. And then, everything, of course, everything will be in writing what we actually agree on, but at least the initial call will have some structure. And maybe it could make it flow better, so. Okay, and you're okay with me making that call? Do you mind if Ralph is there? Cause I always like to have somebody, cause I don't always hear things, and they get something and they're saying something, and I miss a point, so, if you're, everyone alright with that? Thank you for everything. I, you know, it's like the buddy system, I like to have. I hear, my hearing is not as good as it used to be, and I do miss things.
And neither is mine.
Yeah, the joys of aging, the joys of, of aging.
I'm thinking of various comedy skits I've seen.
Yeah, so along that, along item C, so, I mean, I assume that the town's gonna vote for it, I mean, they already voted for this. Don't know why they didn't vote for this, but, I, yeah, no guarantees, but, so let's, I don't know. At our, at our next meeting then, item C, if we could make that a priority, that we really come up with a good agenda, so we have a kickoff meeting when they, there will be one, so. And who do we wanna invite, any, any others in, do we want our first selectman there, do we have any other honored guests, it should be, should we have somebody from the Board of Finance present? Do you have somebody from the Board of Finance? He is.
So we're good there.
We got two boards covering.
You're one of us, you're not one of them.
It's not us and them, right?
Andy, I would say that if Peter's available, we would want, since he's gonna, he's the one who signed the contract anyway. And the other thing is, he is gonna be the gateway to a couple of the organizations that are not in this meeting group that need to be part of it. Like, he, he technically is the person who's gonna tell the fire marsh, you have to participate. Or he is gonna represent any like police or public safety side of it, that's gonna connect that.
Okay.
So those things that are not already in this committee, he's our access to those.
There you go, anyone else that should be?
I don't think for the kickoff.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I think the kickoff is really mostly us, and Peter, of course.
Yeah, scope and legal aspect, well, scope initially, make sure we're on the same page.
And, and talking with him, he, he has, you know, nothing but respect for everybody on this committee, and he appreciates what's happening, and he really does feel that we're we're doing a good service to the town and taking a lot of his blame, and that he doesn't have to, I'm not saying he shouldn't be, but I'm just saying, he, you know.
He's not appointment.
Right, and, and he, he likes what's happening here, so it's, and so does Matt Clark, so the other selectmen are pretty happy. I'm still. Okay, item D.
Sorry, one more thing, I'm, I'm just looking at Fitch's proposal, and I, I see included references in this past job.
Okay.
I'm wondering if that could help us, you know.
Oh, sure.
Like calling.
Unfortunately, they're all Steve Big City. Aren't they doing?
Somebody told, oh, Alex, sir.
They're working in Tomlin.
They're working in Tomlin, right? You know anybody there?
They'll be willing to. I'd be curious to know like what worked in people's contracts and what didn't, you know, achieve.
I think the scope of Tomlin's project does nothing to do with the buildings per se. It's more of, that's eight hours and volunteers and future volunteers, and that's what I think, so. Well, it's certainly a fire-related study they're doing, I'm not so sure that that applies too much to.
Or do you talk to them, like, do you have good numbers? I mean, I just saw like, what is their culture, are they easy to deal with, are they easy to talk to?
I think Tyler talked to the chief over there.
Oh, yeah?
Okay. He probably is being the best dude to go through.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think he heard anything bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That we're currently working on whatever they're studying over there, sure, I get it.
Yeah, maybe, to Pete's point, maybe we call somebody who's not tied to this area at all, not tied to people we know, a truly, a truly completely well, isolated, unbiased person in one of those references, we call them up and say, hey, what do you wanna tell us?
Well, let me, in the.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna call like one of us from their committee in that town, not the fire chief who's gonna have his own agenda and so forth, but like, the Andy of whoever hired them in Burleson, Texas.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, how, how do they go, did they, is anything in the contract, I can get, you know, change order for it, or?
I just wrote down, let me, in the initial call, let me say, do you mind if we contact some of your references?
Included them, so.
They included them. Let me just say then, we will be contacting some of your references, rather than asking permission. I'll just say we will.
Actually, you know what? Maybe you should do it before the town meeting. Then you can say at the town meeting, by the way, we've contacted the references and we got good feedback. That helps the townspeople feel more confident about voting for it.
I think it'll help the Board of Finance even more, because they were very apprehensive about.
Yeah, I mean, that way, we've done our due diligence in advance of the vote.
Oh, I like it, alright, no stuff.
My little Google search here says Mansfield used Fitch and Associates back in twenty twenty. For an efficiency study of fire and EMS services, and at least the headline in the, I think it was in the Chronicle originally, it was in Firehouse Magazine.
Do you know anybody over there I could call, just, I mean, I might as well start.
Well, they changed chief, so, I don't know who was driving it. Now, they did, they did recommend apparently that Mansfield should have two fire stations and not three. Wow, cool. Which is, I'm not sure they're going down that road, but, uh.
Well, no, I mean, right, right, nobody has to follow it, but.
Well, there has, there actually has been a lot of discussion about facilities in Mansfield, they took that study, and they did a townwide facility study also, of all the facilities, so that they could coordinate if there's gonna be major capital changes. Like Andy's example before of taking center school and turning it into a town and public safety hub, or whatever. Those kinda conversations, they took that information and they did a townwide study, another consultant did a townwide study of all the facilities.
Pretty easy to call somebody local first, and then just, if nothing else, hey, they were great to work with, we ultimately didn't follow their advice, but everything they said was that.
Well, there is discussion still in Mansfield about what they're gonna do with their fire stations, if they're, they are aging.
Okay, well, the, the biggest problem there is the station on Route thirty-two, they don't even own the parking lot. Parking lot belongs to the church.
Oh.
And that's.
Which has been sold twice in the last few years.
Yes.
Okay, really? So there was some type of moving down by the end event school, but, you know, where that's abandoned now, but it's a long ways away.
There was also discussion about moving slightly north, getting a piece of property from the state, like along the old training school property along Route thirty-two, to replace that station and the station over in four corners, which they have just done some renovation work on because they're gonna stab it, they got grant work, they got a new fire truck based on staffing that station. So right now, they're not going in that direction, but there's still discussion that if this problem with the parking lot and everything rears its ugly head, that they might be able to do all of those services from a location closer to the intersection of forty-four and thirty-two. And then they would be two fire stations, so that's great.
So, apparently that's another customer of Fitch and Associates. Yeah, well, good, all right, so I will, I will reach out to some of the references prior to the town meeting and see what I can find out.
But that sounds like fun. How good is it that he comes to our area, and William does a free visits?
Yeah, but since, you know, I don't wanna drag this up so much, but funny about that station, that, the one on, one, one ninety-five across from Holiday Mall, I thought that was pretty much to fund, but then you put in two hundred housing units right across the street, all of a sudden, now that makes that a lot more reasonable to have it, and then Mike Demato had said they have plans to put more apartments behind that and behind that. I mean, that, that four corners is gonna be quite a hub of businesses and housing.
If you start from the intersection and head towards Hartford on forty-four, I looked at some of the proposed plans that are still in process, one got, I think, one or two got denied by Alan Owens. That doesn't mean that's the end of it.
Right.
But they didn't modify, maybe they come back again, yeah.
But they were pretty big. And they're all behind what you see on seventy-four, on forty-four.
You know, like the, the Kane family, they just put that property up there, that's gonna be for sale, that's a hundred and seventy-five acres, and I think John Jared Sparks.
Oh, that, yeah. I had heard that.
That's gonna be on the market.
There you go, eighty-six acres behind me.
Yeah, and I, so I wonder if there's gonna be a little cascading there as all these families age, there's an awful lot of absentee landlords on some of these larger pieces of property that remain.
Something.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna see the development rush into Wellington.
I don't think so either, but it's gonna be, it might be something that as we look at our fifty-year plan, probably something to consider.
Well, I see the eighty-six acres of Route thirty-two there behind me.
Yeah, right.
That's more attractive than something with King's mother.
Yeah, of course, but I'm just saying, these older property owners, aging property owners, they're not gonna wanna keep it. Okay, um, grant for emergency services.
This was the grant that?
This is the grant that, that's, that's Mike Demato wrote it. The grantee is actually Peter Tanaka, primary court of contact, kind of like, of course, it's grantee. Uh, we are game on it, as a, what, what do they call us, a supporting, a, a supporting group or something, so, yeah. Supporting under participating organizations, Wellington Fire Department, Wellington Emergency Services Building Committee, so. There's a, according to Mr. Demato, there's a good chance they're gonna be getting this grant for somewhere under four hundred thousand dollars. Somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars. Original grant was for three point two million for a new fire station.
Can I correct you on that?
Please do so.
Okay, the cost of what was covered by the grant was three point two five million.
Right.
What was requested, I think, was four hundred and eighty-seven thousand or something.
Forty-seven five.
So it's, we're not getting
no, we're not.
Four eighty-seven, if we get it, assuming this, this goes through. It's specifically for Station thirteen.
Well, now see this.
Emergency operations, E O C.
Yeah. Well, it gets a little weird, because, right, Wellington Firehouse and E O C renovation remediation. The title, in the name of proposal, it does not specify a station, but then in the description of work and the description of, of, of the problem, it's all about Station thirteen. They're talking to Mike Demato. He said, we really should have a plan on how this money is to be spent. I talked to Peter about it, he thinks it is the purview of this committee to provide the guidance for that expenditure.
How soon, how soon does something happen with this?
I talked to Mike two or three weeks ago, he said, every, his indication's from the federal, the federal grant. This is from the Blumenthal, Chris Murphy line. He said it's passed through all the committees, and now it's just waiting for the final approval of the, of Congress now. That doesn't mean that it's gonna be a done deal, but it doesn't seem there are too many impediments to getting it. And Peter said, you have a year to comply, I don't know where he got that information, I don't know.
So the, have they, they haven't, they haven't gone out for Christmas break yet, right? In Washington, they're close, though, it, it's, their Christmas break, unlike the rest of us, starts like three weeks before Christmas.
And then it's what, three weeks after?
Exactly, yeah.
But hopefully it'll be decided before the new administration, cause that always causes quite a bit of turmoil.
Yeah, and they're a little busy with a lot of.
Lot of other stuff, so. But the, if I could just read this aloud, it says, five sentence description of how you use the federal funds. If awarded, these funds will be used to renovate and expand the town's fire station. Not plural. Beyond the significant deficiencies within the current building related to code requirements, necessary training and sleeping spaces and emergency operations, this aging facility was recently found to contain mold. Based on the way the current building was constructed, it was determined that complete renovation, including an expansion, was the most appropriate way to make the building safe, address code requirements in addition to the operational needs of the department. So.
So in all likelihood, we'll probably expect to get notice in January if it was awarded.
Right.
Which would give us, maybe January or February would be the availability time, then it'd be February of February. Unless, does it say what year the funds are for? What fiscal year?
That I've seen in this document.
Cause that would be the other question, if they're fiscal twenty-six funds, we wouldn't have access until June, July.
Okay, I expect there to be more parameters and guidance within the actual award. This is the request, and I just, this is all my cat so far. The, the value, the total, uh, four eighty-seven five. And there's, I mean, there's another paragraph, problem issue statement, I can send this out to everybody if you're interested.
Well, I think really, I mean, probably we have enough time to get our consultant work done.
I think so, I think it could.
And that would be a great document, and that report would be great justification to help support.
Right.
We may have to answer those questions sooner.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We might have our consultant work done by that time, and the consultant work would help support the, the directing those funds.
So I'd, I'd like to keep this on the agenda so we don't lose track of it, because it's something that, and again, it's, it's gonna be sort of an imperative need that almost eclipses some of the other.
On our quick move lessons.
Yeah, it'll be on our quick move, but I, I think it, I, I think it works well in concert with what we're doing, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's a distraction. And I don't think it's adverse, but I think it's something we need to roll in.
You're gonna roll it in?
Excuse us, then don't stop on our account. So that's good, so I just, you know, I wanted to get that out there, so this is news. Good, yeah, it is great news, actually great news, it, I mean, and, and really, what, what I, I don't it just says fire station, so.
If anyone wanted more to.
Right.
We know we have a problem.
Yeah, right, so, but then, since it doesn't, it doesn't specifically say it, but then the description is basically one, one of the three buildings.
Well, the good, the good news too is that unless the study says you gotta get rid of that place, there's no reason to be there, which is probably not likely, that they're gonna be that strong in answer.
I would think you're right.
Whether the study says, keep it just as a garage apparatus, or that should be the central fire station, whatever the study says.
Right.
Probably the study will say there's value to being at that location, in which case half a million dollars could get used in any of those manners.
Exactly.
Whether it goes towards a new building, whether it goes towards remediating and cleaning, and making that into a good garage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whatever, you know, the, it's not like we're on a path that we can't figure out how to use that money.
Correct, correct, I just, you know, but the way, the, the, using the money might come sooner than, again, I don't Mike, the way Mike explained it to me, it isn't necessarily that you have to spend the money.
You have to commit.
You have to, you have to have a real, you can't say, oh, well, screw the fire department, we're putting it in a public swimming pool, you know, we're doing something completely different. In fact, that you can't do, it has to be.
Now, you have the spirit of, for that, you have to get your senator to sneak an amendment in somewhere.
But this may also help if Station thirteen remains viable after the study.
Right.
Getting that right of way narrowed for Route thirty-two and, and adding to that land to enhance any building that goes there with respect to zoning requirements.
Yeah, that's the point, there's a lot of things that could be used for it.
But it could put some leverage on the state. But it could put some leverage on the state.
Yeah.
Put that property.
And make the, yeah, make that work.
I suspect one of the deliverables of that grant is you have to come up with an emergency operations center.
That very well could be.
That's the intent of that whole grant program is the E O C aspect of that.
Which you thought Peter's board has a thing that is still, has, has to be, is all, I guess has to be done, right, or has to be formalized? I mean, it isn't just saying.
Well, that had been, that, that station had been used as the E O C and it's not functional right now.
Okay.
So you don't even have, you don't even have the E O C right now.
So that was considered the E O state in the town, okay, now it's, now it's not there, so we have to have one that makes sense. All right, well, we will then just, just keep as, as we, um, as we move forward. And I mean, again, Mike sounded pretty positive that it's gonna go through, so let's, if it, if we go to the assumption that it is. It's basically just a sum of money, so we could probably. I'm just brainstorming here, then maybe as we move forward, we can say, hey, this would be a good use.
And we're gonna, and we're gonna get guidance.
Of that money, right.
They're always telling you the parameters of what you're using the money for.
That's, that's a good point.
A lot of parameters.
Yeah, I don't wanna get ahead of, too ahead of Mike's thoughts, but just to say, hey, look, cause if you have the money and you're not asking the town for it, then that's good. So if there are some things that become in our face that we wanna deal with, we can say, hey, you know, we actually have some money that could solve that problem quickly. And it might be the most appropriate thing, okay, moving on to item, the last item, E. Uh, discussion regarding engaging owners, an O P M, owner's project manager to assist with leading our charge especially so he is being. Their task, so again, clerk of the works, O P M, somebody that's outside of the committee that. Is uh, if the D action starts to take place.
Well, I kinda remember our experience with, with S B C. And I'm thinking that, that's, as, as Fitch starts to coalesce with that. Their study, uh, we, we need to get going on, all right, what are these facilities gonna look like, what are they gonna cost? Uh, and that's why I wanted to add this item to the agenda to start discussion, should we. Put out an R F B for an O P M. For this, once Fitch kinda points us in a direction that we should be going.
Yeah, I think, I think we should be collecting ideas for that, I think we don't know enough yet what the scope. Of the potential projects would be, and, and O P M can help you with that, but if you don't, like, we know so little right now.
Yeah.
That I don't know how we would be able to word the scope of work.
Correct.
Well enough for the O P M right now, cause it's too nebulous, but I think we should be pulling the thoughts together.
That's exactly what I was trying to do, is at least get people thinking about that, because it's beyond what any one of us, I think, is gonna be able to do.
And you can't really do that by committee, I don't think.
And you're gonna, you're probably have a different le, you'll have a different level of O P M engagement if you're. Gonna do some renovations to each of the three buildings versus if you're gonna build some public safety headquarters.
Right, right.
You know, right, so we're, yeah, I think we should be thinking about it and have it on our shortlist.
Yeah, it's premature right now, but for sure, but I think it's a good idea. Oh, are we, are those people in the room there? Okay, good, awesome.
Well, they're actually, the computers in the room, they're really somewhere else.
I do need that kinda guy. I lose my way.
These people are in the room.
I lose my way frequently. Okay, um, that gets us through new business, are there any other thoughts or things that we should be within that, that we need to discuss? I didn't get really any correspondence except a couple of consultants just responded to my email and I said. Hey, we're still working on things, and they said, okay, thanks, so we're eager to work with you, that kinda sounds, so. And I did tell them where we're at, I was pretty out front, you know, oh, please, go to Barry, I didn't go get you, I said, throw to Barry's committees. Eventually you'll a town meeting, we don't know yet, we don't. Yeah, I don't think anybody, I didn't get any, I don't think I got any other correspondence except uh, this application. And that's what all Mike has so far. Uh, and I guess we're back to your presidency speak. Back in eight, is there anybody in the room or online that wishes to speak? Um, Chair recognizes James Marshall of Fisher Hill Road.
Uh, thanks for the intro, Andy, um, yeah, I guess, um, I just wanted to say, I'm glad you guys have, uh, are starting discussion on the O P M front, um. I, I would say it's not too premature and quite frankly, the earlier you guys get him on board in advance of the, your, um, station location study. They'll be able to hit the ground running, they'll be able to inform some of the early decision-making right after that. It is definitely not too early, um, especially when you're looking at two months, three months before you guys even get an R F B O. So I just encourage you to move that along as quickly as you can. Um, you don't need to define a scope, you know what the charge of the committee is, it's just, you're hiring an O P M to assist in the charge of the committee to determine what the next steps are for the stations. Yeah, so anyway, I'm just glad to see you guys are moving that way and, um.
I want to ask a question though, James, I, just while you're on that, and just help me understand, um. If, since there is no project yet. There may not, I mean, the, uh, the consultant might propose something that simply cannot be done. How does the O P M that we're paying help us before? We don't, like, so, you know, project manager, if there's no project, how does getting one early and, and incurring that expense help us? That's.
Yeah, no, and, and I, I get it, you don't necessarily, the O P M is on board to help you develop a project. Um, and honestly, they're more effective usually when it's, when they're engaged, um, in the early stages. Yes, they can help you enact the project, but they are really a useful tool from a planning perspective. Um, early on, I mean, I work with O P Ms all the time during feasibility studies onward. Um, just helping to vet and align. Project scopes and project parameters or what the project may be with, with all of the real world ramifications that you guys, you know, budget, grant opportunities, um. Helping coordinate station location study and, and honestly, they're good at helping you just get an overall level of efficiency. Um, because they'll be able to create work plans for you, which is, you know, one of those things that's. Helpful all along the way, so it's just, I, I, I think conversations. With some, I know we have, the town has relationships with, with O P Ms from the school building, um, committee and others, um. It, it's worth considering what opportunities are out there to get somebody on board as, as, as an advisor, um. They're not helping you enact the project at the early stage, it's just advising you on how to get to a project that is realizable for the town.
All right, thanks, I didn't, I don't know anything about O P M, so that was helpful, thank you.
They can pick on all shapes and forms, but, so. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thanks, James.
Is it logical to assume that if we want an O P M, that we have to go back to the White House to fund this position?
I, probably.
Yes.
Go upstairs?
You can go through.
Come on. Hi, how are you?
Just introduce yourself for the record.
Melissa Miller.
Thank you for your comments.
They all went upstairs.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, then my key rules are timing, uh, when we hire this person, we, we would have approved project by the town, I would think, before we hired him.
Well, I, 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 yeah, again, I don't know.
The project isn't funded, but it's more a finance and the townspeople, why would we hire a?
Well, that's what I, that, that, that's.
So, we should be careful not to get in too much debate in present to speak.
I'm sorry, no, I wasn't, I wasn't, I just wanted information.
This is, this is something you should be presenting when you talk to the town meeting, that we are considering when to bring on an O P M. So the people start thinking about that.
Right, I like that. All right. Where was that, where was that making an impression?
Andy's to do this.
Cause the Fitch study is the beginning of this process, not the middle or the end, there's gonna be many steps in between, and some of them will probably involve money.
Yes.
All the good ones.
Uh, James, you're gonna, that's a good point, and uh, I, I don't, again, that's, uh, that, that, those are very valid reasons for. Why you won't get the F P M R.
Haven't got the money yet for higher pitch.
Might be a little premature tonight, but it does make sense, it does.
Hopefully.
All right, um, anyone else wishes to speak, uh, in the room or online, I don't see any hands raised. Um, is there anything else we need to discuss?
Okay, too. We have a town meeting on the seventeenth. That will give us the green light or not, um, for Fitch. Do, should we consider a special meeting between now and the end of the year? To this committee to, to get things rolling with Fitch.
Well, I would imagine.
This is our last meeting of the year. Right, yeah, and there's not, with the holidays, we're not gonna have a lot of, a lot of us aren't gonna have much more availability in the next three weeks anyway.
No, I understand.
But I think, I think it's gonna start with Andy's phone call to them.
Right.
Assuming the town meeting passes it, he's gonna get on the phone with them and say, okay, here we are, what's next? If they say, we'll contract you tomorrow, we wanna have a meeting the first week of January. We wanna get rolling, then we better, then Andy's gonna call a special meeting.
Well, probably, right, I might think that.
Well, our first meeting in January is on the ninth anyway.
Right, he may have to call one on the third.
Yeah, 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 all right, so, well, let's, let's, we'll launch off of whenever, however.
Okay.
Fitch responds.
Yeah, they may say that, they may say that, you know, they can't get us a contract to even start reviewing until the first week of January.
They got holidays.
Because of holidays and.
Sure, okay.
Personnel.
I like that, that works for me.
The other thing was, um, I did a draft meeting schedule for the record.
Oh, that's right.
For, for twenty twenty-five.
Actually, the, uh, if I accept the motion on that.
You should have, uh, all right.
Oh, we probably should have done that under.
Well, I move we add item F to new business, which is meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, uh, by, uh, Mike McCout to add the, uh. The, the, uh, twenty twenty-five schedule as item F that was seconded by Rick Robb. Any discussion?
The interesting thing about it is.
Any discussion?
On the motion.
On the motion. Any discussion?
So are these all Thursday nights?
Yes, well, we're gonna talk about the schedule in a second, we're just adding the agenda right now.
Yeah, all in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Fine.
Aye, it's unanimous, very good, okay, that's been added to the agenda.
Now let's talk about the.
As item F, so now let's talk about the, uh, schedule for, uh, twenty twenty-five.
I was surprised there were only two Thursday conflicts with holidays. Thanksgiving and Christmas. I mean, I, I got some little trivia things on the right side there.
Very nice.
Thought you might be amused by that.
We are, yeah.
I didn't know there was a Lee Ferguson today.
Lee Ferguson there? Minnesota, oh, that's my people.
Somebody must know that.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be any, any place you have a bunch of Scandinavians.
What are your town committees meet on Thursdays?
Board of Finance.
Uh, apparently.
We will, we'll crash into some of that, if crash into that on budget season.
Yeah.
We will crash into that on budget season, cause like in February and March, Board of Finance is meeting every single Thursday night.
Yeah, okay.
So we may just have to have alternative location and an alternative Zoom link. Not that that would ever go wrong.
An alternative agenda.
Yeah, speaking of that, uh, in the F O I A meeting, uh, they said, what is it, Zoom links have to be put out forty-eight hours in advance. That was news to me.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I was telling Ralph about that the other day.
But they said they could ask, you could do them months, he said he could do them six months out, if you know it's gonna be on those date, you post a Zoom link, it's empty. Doesn't go anywhere, but the link is valid unless you change it.
Yeah, well, the meeting ID and the passcode is consistent. The link is what changes from month to month.
Yeah, oh, okay, all right.
Uh, that's how it's explained to me.
Yes, the link, but you could still go to Zoom and just enter by meeting number and password without the link and you can get there manually.
Uh, so, and that satisfies.
But if you just put out the agenda a day sooner than you have to. Then it's, to me, it's done. And I would, would rather work it that way, it's a little tougher for the board selecting because Friday doesn't count for that. So there.
Okay, so. I move we accept the calendar as presented.
All right, a motion's been made by Mike McCout to, uh, accept the, um.
Calendar as presented.
Yes, the, uh. The twenty twenty-five calendar, and it was seconded by, yeah. Any discussion?
The only thing I have to say is I'm gonna have to miss all of February and March. There's no way I can.
Oh, right, cause of your, with, with the, that would make perfect sense, okay. Um, we will note that your excuse doing very important work.
We'll do everything we, we get away with.
The money's, the money's gone, so.
All right, uh, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, very good, thank you for adding that to the agenda.
Um, Mr. Chairman, on your notes of things you need to do or that you're gonna delegate to Ralph. Um, this has to be sent to the town clerk before the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
No, I do that.
Very good.
I figured you did, but, you know.
It's a little bit different than planning.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Most of the made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor? By the way, feedback on this status?
Stop recording.
I've read partway through it.
Yeah.
I don't expect it to die, buddy.
Mike, can you stop us recording, thank you. Before I say something inappropriate.